I have. This is a call.
Do something.
Greetings. Welcome to the February 19th Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, could we have a roll call?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
And Patty Crone.
Here. Any agenda changes or revisions?
No.
Okay. All right. We have the minutes from our regular meeting of February 5th. I assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes of the January 15th meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any final orders, resolutions, or written communications?
None.
None. Okay. We have a public hearing. It is now 6:01, and this is the public hearing for file CUP 2019-01 is now open. This public hearing concerns a request for a conditional use permit for animal boarding kennels in association with the proposed new veterinary clinic. The project site is 3219 Northwest Highway 101 in the general commercial zone. The applicant is Ocean Lake Veterinary Clinic PC, and the property owner is JMK04, an LLC. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter?
I need to. I have a working relationship with the applicant and own what some people might say a competing business.
So, we're gonna call that an actual conflict, and you will not participate and not vote?
Okay. I will leave the room.
Okay, fine. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of the remaining commissioners to participate in this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? Okay. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.763, Section 5. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
Thank you, Chair. In regards to tonight's public hearing on conditional use permit 2019-01, allowing animal boarding at a new location for Ocean Lake Veterinary, the conditional use requirements need to meet that the proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, that the site for the proposed use is adequate in size, shape, to accommodate the use in all yards, spaces, walls, fencing, parking, loading, landscaping, and other features required by the title, and the site for the proposed use relates to streets and highways adequate in width and degree of improvement to handle the quantity and kind of vehicular traffic that would be generated by the use, and that the proposed use will have minimal adverse impacts upon adjoining properties and the improvements thereon. And then, finally, in areas designated as requiring preservation of historic scenic or cultural attributes, proposed structures will be of a design complementary to the surrounding area.
All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria previously listed, or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining procedures as it's the entrance to the city council chambers, generally the ordinance of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, the staff report, questions of staff, the applicant presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, then a rebuttal by the applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, requests to submit written argument deliberations and decisions. The city has established some time limits. The applicant will have 15 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-in sheet at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimonies to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. And that is the end of the preliminary matters and the required statements. So, could we please have the staff report?
Yes. I'm gonna move.
So, tonight I'll be presenting staff report for the conditional use permit application. The applicants have taken the approach of applying for the conditional use permit prior to coming in for site plan in an effort to be prudent and make sure that this is something that the neighborhood will accept. The application is for, the general location of the site is at Northwest 33rd and Highway 101, the old feed store. It includes a total of six parcels, and it is approximately .79 acres in size. It is currently zoned general commercial and has R1, 5,000 to the northwest and to the west of them, and general commercial across the street on Highway 101 and south. There is some site topography. There is a 10-foot elevation towards the rear property line that provides some buffer from the residential uses that are focused around Northwest Quay Drive, as shown in the topography map. The project description is a request for the conditional use permit. The applicant proposes to build a approximately 5,000-square-foot structure that would dedicate 1,000 of that square feet to animal boarding. That would include 20 kennels with, I believe, the six to 10 of those kennels would have indoor and outdoor access in a contained fashion. The, sorry. The, what was I, oh, the hours that the dogs boarded in the camp, the applicant proposes to confine the boarded dogs in the kennels from 5:30 PM to 8:00 AM the following day. In that case, there should not be exterior outdoor noise during those timeframes. The proposal is in, staff finds that the proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The use is allowed in the general commercial zone, subject to the approval of the conditional use permit. The site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape, based upon the information that has been provided. More analysis on the requirements for that development will be required at site plan review. In granting of the CUP, the planning commission may impose additional conditions or regulations that's found, that are necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding property or neighborhood, should you choose to. In regards to traffic and transportation, we did reach out to ODOT, and they had no comments or concerns in regards to the access to the site. And then, in regards to the minimal adverse impacts upon adjoining properties and the improvements thereon, the commission shall consider, but not limited to, the proposed location of the improvements on-site, vehicular egress and ingress, and internal circulation, pedestrian access setbacks, height of buildings, walls, fences, landscaping, screening. The applicant did due diligence, and they went and notified all of their surrounding neighbors of a letter that they were purchasing the property. It is my understanding, and the department has not received any communication from any neighbors, either in support or in non-support of this application at this time. I did not find anything in the city code or the Oregon Revised Statutes that require more than what the applicant is proposing to offer. In addition, the applicant has proposed to retain on their draft site plan their existing vegetation that is on the westerly side of the parcels. Staff has measured this from the proposed area for the dog boarding and kennels, and has an average of about 32 and 1/2 feet between those kennels there. The street Google photos show the topography that was briefly discussed and outlined on the topography map. As you can see, we have some elevation here right before the sidewalk, and you see the landscaping that is being proposed to remain from 101, and then a photo of the same parcel on the backside from Northwest Quay Drive as well. Staff recommends the planning commission hold a public hearing, consider testimony regarding the proposed conditional use, and determine whether the project complies with the above criteria. If planning commission finds that the criteria is in fact met or can be met with conditions, should make the necessary findings and grant the conditional use permit to accommodate overnight boarding for animals. I'm available for any questions. Mike?
I couldn't tell where the sidewalk was built, and I know the side, I thought it was up above the slope rather than would be built by the street.
It is. You can, if you can see some of the photos, there's a hand railing right here, and it's ultimately right between the retaining wall for the site, and the hand railing is where that sidewalk is.
Does that wall have to continue, then, to the, toward Kate, there?
To the right of the photo?
The wall ends here at this intersection on 33rd. I am unsure what happens to the wall after their property. But as you see, the sidewalk is along the front edge of their site, as provided in the site plan.
Other questions? Steve?
Is there maximum number of kennels that can be housed at any facility like this?
No, we cannot, I could not find any information on a maximum amount of kennels. Would want to just make sure that it is an accessory use to the primary use.
Marie?
Yes. You were talking about kennels, and is this, at one point it refers to dogs and cats. Is this only for dogs and cats, or are you talking about other animals such as, I don't know, we have pigs and we have pet goats in town, et cetera, that might want to have some lodging?
Yeah. So, the Lincoln City Municipal Code defines kennel as which four or more cats and/or dogs. So, exotic animals would not meet the definition of our kennel. This conditional use permit is for the definition.
And that's in for inside and outside?
For the use itself.
Usage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you currently planning on, or do you know if they're currently planning on retaining the current building, or if they're going to tow it?
It's hard to tell based upon the site design. It's a major remodel of the existing building or a new building, but I would let the applicant answer that at their turn.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. I think we're ready for the applicant's presentation.
I'm Dr. Jen Malter. For those of you who may not know me already.
Speak right into the mic.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
I'm Dr. Jen Malter, for those of you who don't know me already. This is Mary Kincaid, the other owner of the property. And I don't have anything formal produced. Kate said that, you know, we could just say that we're open for questions. I feel like I probably pretty sufficiently answered a lot of that in the application. But in answer to your question, we did hire a veterinary architect, and we are planning on taking the building down and putting a new building up, so.
Do you have a, an expected time, how do I put it, when your construction will be going on?
I think that might depend on the city, a little bit. But we're working on lending right now, and honestly, we wanted to get the conditional use permit through because it certainly dictates how our plans would move forward, because we really would like to have boarding at this facility.
Yeah. My concern was with drainage, if it's being built during the rainy season versus the drier period of the year, the three months.
Yeah. We would, I mean, obviously, we would like to move forward as quickly as possible, so. Yeah.
Other questions for the applicant? Can you briefly characterize how the neighborhood meeting went?
Oh, sure, yeah. So, we sent out, Kate provided a list, a master list, and so we sent out letters to all the property owners, and then I hand-delivered letters to all of the properties, and then we had a community meeting, and we had seven people, is that right? Seven people that came, and only one person, I would say, even had any concerns. The other people, I think, were just there for interest, they just wanted to know. And it seemed, they seemed supportive. I mean, we didn't really, you know, we don't intend to be a disturbance to the neighborhood. We're upstanding members of the community already. You know, we live in, we are, business presently is in an area that is surrounded by both residential and business. To my knowledge, we've never had a noise complaint, an odor complaint, a trash complaint. You know, obviously, we don't have kennels that are outside, but we do house animals internally, and we haven't had any problems thus far. We've been there nine years, almost, I think. So, we don't intend to do anything different. This would just be a newer, nicer facility that's better than what we have right now, that could offer more to the community and to tourism in our area. I mean, we certainly get a ton of boarding requests, so it would just be a complement to what we're doing right now.
And the boarding during the evening hours is inside?
Correct.
They're not left outside?
Yeah.
Is, do you have someone on-site 24/7?
We won't have somebody there all the time, just like we don't now. Unfortunately, there's no one, you know, locally, really anywhere on the coast, even for veterinary services, that's available 24/7. You have to travel to the valley or north. But what we do have right now, even in our clinic at this time, is cameras that we can access from home. So, I look in on them frequently, and I spend a lot of time at the clinic, so I don't expect that that'll probably change, but we'll just have, you know, kennel attendants and staff that can help out.
What's your response time?
Well, I live, we live about three minutes from the clinic, so I'm mostly looking for, you know, like, honestly, we use them for security, and that's really why Mary wanted them the most at the clinic, but for me, it was more about, you know, patient care. And so, I can look at, you know, things like fluid pumps, and I can see that they're beeping or they need attention, and so that's why we're using them now. I mean, for both of those reasons, security and for, you know, medical care.
How many animals do you board in your current clinic versus your future?
We don't do any boarding, but we hospitalized patients, so sometimes we'll do, like, medical boarding, like a patient that's diabetic, or a patient that requires a little intervention more than a caretaker might be able to provide, you know, like, if a client's going out of town. But those are pretty extenuating circumstances. Most of the time, the patients in the clinic that are with me overnight are receiving active medical care because they're sick.
Okay. And in this future, when we'll go up to eight?
Up to eight.
Animals?
Oh, so, we'll have the capabilities internally. My understanding from Kate is that that is already sort of encompassed within what we would already be doing as a veterinary practice. It's more that we're applying for the conditional use permit for the boarding, you know, just the external boarding stuff to the practice. But we'll have the same ability to house animals internally. I can't remember, I don't, it's more about our floor plans that we have in the clinic right now. It's more about, like, active feet versus numbers of kennels that we can accommodate. But the internal kennels that we have in the clinic are more about housing sick animals, surgical patients. There'll be a small cat ward in there. The cats are obviously, you know, nobody will know they're there because they're cats. So, but we'll do a little bit of cat boarding, but really, the inside stuff is more about accommodating surgical patients, sick patients, things like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, do you want to provide any testimony in support of the application? You're good? Okay. And I don't, I don't see anyone in the audience for other, other testimony. Do we have any testimony from representatives of public agencies? I don't think so. No need for you to rebut anything that's been said. ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A, states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days, or hold the record open for no less than seven days, to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Do you have any desire to hold this open?
I move that we close the record and close the hearing at this point, or.
Second.
Well, okay, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to that? No? Okay. The record's closed. Yeah, I guess we want to just deliberate and then vote. Are there any deliberations?
I believe they have the right to submit final written argument after the close of the record, and we usually ask them if they waive that, and if they waive it, then you can deliberate.
Oh, okay. Do you want to submit anything additional, or would you like to waive that right? If you want to waive it, all right, it's waived. So, now we can deliberate and then vote?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to commend them for contacting their people in the neighborhood before they came to us. That's, makes a lot of sense.
Does the city attorney or staff have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings? Nope. No, we're good to go. Okay. This is a tentative decision of the planning commission?
You haven't reached that yet.
We haven't reached it yet. Okay. We can vote. We can vote? Do I need a motion?
You can deliberate and vote at this point.
Okay. Well, we're not deliberating, we're done deliberating, so.
Will someone make a motion, then?
I'd like to motion that we vote on this issue and close the hearing, or whatever else we have to do.
You would need to make a motion to approve the conditional use application.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to motion that we approve the conditional use application as written.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have a tentative decision. A final order for this decision will be prepared for the next regular meeting. That's that.
That's it.
Okay. Congratulations. Back to our agenda. Any old business? Okay. New business? The comprehensive plan process and state requirements. Director Zamel, is that you? Okay.
So, at our last meeting, we discussed the work program for 2019 for the planning commission. I wanted to provide some initial thoughts on the comprehensive plan process and state requirements. The, what I heard from the planning commission at the February, sorry, I guess, what was the, the fifth meeting? Thank you. The February 5th meeting was that we wanted to make sure we did some public outreach and engagement before we made a call for a public hearing. So, in the packet today, I have drafted some brief ideas that I would like to run past the commission to determine if, and see if this is a good approach that you would like to take. In addition, the city's comprehensive plan has been updated numerous times. I've provided a summary sheet of all of those updates in your packet for you to see where there were additions or adjustments throughout the years. At this point in time, I recommend the planning commission have two study, have study sessions with staff, anywhere from two to four in totality, introduction to the process, some state requirements, and then identifying our existing documents to be included, as well as doing some public outreach after those study sessions. I've penciled in one or two. I think that getting the communication and message out to the community before we send a notice citywide of a change to our long-term vision and goals is going to be really important. I know that there's been a lot of community engagement over the last 12 months in regards to Imagine Lincoln City, and we want to be able to keep up all of that good work that was done and expand on it a little more. I would recommend that we have an outreach event prior to the public hearing and staff recommendation for that. And then, due to the current staffing shortage of a senior planner, we anticipate that the first work study that could be completed would be in April. And that is not a commitment to do it in April, but the first opportune time would be in April of this year, that we could begin preparing for this. This may be ideal, but I anticipate the project would take four to six months to complete if we're utilizing existing adopted plans and policies. For trying to redesign our goals and policies, it could take significantly more time on that. And if map amendments are necessary, they may need to come after the goals and policies are processed. We could take the comprehensive plan in bite-sized chunks if we needed to, and prep it for one final ordinance to go to city council, and that'd be a conversation I'd have with our legal counsel on best recommending that. So, I'd really like to just hear your feedback, if you think that this is a good initial step, if there's any recommendations or suggestions that you guys have with your tenure and experience. I know that Richard has been preparing an outline for a comp plan update for 19 years now. So, he's got a lot of great ideas, and I keep telling him, he has to dump them all on me so I can carry him forward. With that, I just want to open a conversation with that ideas and get your input.
Could I ask a clarifying question before we open it up to a discussion? I'm not sure what the status is for hiring a senior planner, where we are in that process, but do you anticipate that any of these study sessions could occur prior to that, or do you think that it would be best to have the senior planner onboard to go through the whole review of the process and existing procedures?
Considering, the way I see it, the first study, work study, would probably be identifying the outline and the process and the understanding of why we're even updating it. It would be good to have the new member here. It could occur, I could, I could request. good to have the new member here. It could occur. I could request that staff to just review the meeting afterwards too, though, and jump in.
Okay. What is the status of the senior planner?
The, the status is that we are under review and completing the process and looking into some background information at this time. We hope to hire, we don't have any space to bring someone into the building until Mr. Townsend retires on March 8th. I think he tells me every day. So, we would not be able to bring someone in until probably the, towards the end of March for space saving anyways.
But you have applicants and your interviewer, at least doing background checks?
Correct, correct. And it is closed now at this time.
Ah, okay. Okay. Is this your, this isn't your last meeting, Richard, is it?
No, we got one more.
Okay, okay. Because we don't have cake. So, all right. Questions from other commissioners?
I'm looking right now at the handout issue 7.1, which has in it documents for the comprehensive plan. Are those things that we would go through, all of those items, as incorporating them into the comprehensive plan? So, paying attention to what they are ahead of time might not be a benefit to us? Because I see inventory, material, economic inventory, no Scott Gap neighborhood plan, then all the way down to wastewater master plan, stormwater master plan. Are these all part of the comprehensive plan, or do we just bring them into it without really reviewing them?
They are currently part of the existing comprehensive plan that has gone through a review process and adopted by council. Now, there may be duplicatives, or we may need to pare back down like the parks, let's see here, what would be a good one, natural hazards ordinance of 2012. Maybe that superseded the beach, dune, shoreline stuff that was done in 8509. So, there would be some cleanup to create a cohesive plan for, for all of these adopted. And then, the adopted documents supporting the comprehensive plan, we would likely want to bring those ones into the actual document. And I'll let Richard expand some more if you want.
A lot of the ones in the, in the upper list there are, have, there are ordinances that were incorporated into the existing plan. In the lower list, there's several items, like the walking biking plan, the transportation system plan, parks and recreation plan, and so on. They have policies that have been adopted and that will need to be folded into the new comprehensive plan. So, they are support documents. We have some earlier things too, like the, back in, I think, 2000, we adopted the natural resource overlay zone and policies relating to those. Those things need to be continued forward, you know, carried forward into the plan. So, there's a lot of sifting that's going on. But, but I guess important that some of the, the more recent plans be, the policies that are in there that have been adopted need to be, become part of the comprehensive plan itself.
No? A little overwhelming? Well, you know, I, I think in our last, our last meeting when we talked about goals, this was one that was fairly high up on the list. And I know, Richard, you've been working on it for a long time, and I suspect you'd like to see this done sooner rather than later.
Right, right.
So-
And also done right.
And done right. Well, yes. So, I mean, I would, I would like to see us get this on our agenda as quickly as possible. And if, if April, you know, sometime mid-April, maybe, we can get started on the, the internal work sessions. I think that would be a good idea.
And we will do what we can. We cannot regulate, we cannot necessarily know what applications will be coming in that also need to be part of our agenda. I do know that there will be an application submitted very shortly for a village's master plan, which will need to be coming in front of you guys sooner than later as well, as a priority from the council. So, that may take precedent, but I've heard your comment in regards to as soon as humanly possible.
So, the village's plan was presented to council last-
Right.
And, and what-
They authorized, they authorized, or basically directed staff to prepare, anyway, directed us to prepare an application for planning commission approval of the master plan. And I'm, I'm pulling that together now.
Okay, so, do you have a time, timeline on that?
As fast as I can possibly get it done and consistent with getting the required notice out.
Okay. All right. So, these could kind of come together in April, it sounds like.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, I'm hoping it'll come together in March, and maybe a hearing in May.
Okay.
Does this have anything to do with the properties that are for sale then, that they have been?
There are two properties in the villages, the Casket Head property, that we are in negotiations with developers to sell. And so, to some extent, yeah, that, it does relate to those. And our negotiations with them reflect the upcoming plan.
Okay, so, it's for them if-
More than what?
It is for properties that-
There are two properties-
Could be developed.
Yeah, there are two properties, so they're included, yes.
Good.
I think in view of what you said earlier about a senior planning, planner being onboard, hopefully, within the next month, we can get a full complement of planning commission members onboard too. I think we have one vacancy now. Miles, congratulations on being appointed to a four-year term last week. But is there any way the city can get outward that, you know, we need applicants to sit on the planning commission?
I know that the city recorder has been publicizing it. Anybody who's watching at home, apply. I'm assuming that applications are, are open. But yeah, apply, contact the city recorder. Actually, you can probably find out online how to apply for it. The city's website, lincolncity.org.
Okay, that was, that was good.
I, I'm interested in the urban growth boundary being expanded. And I know that that can't be expanded until we've got the comprehensive plan done. But I would like to see Foothill Boulevard continued and something that can be done is grant for anyone to start helping us with the project. And I, I don't know what the grant system is, basically, but the state of Oregon has a lot of funds that they could tap.
We may be able to get some grant money through programs that the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Oregon Department of Transportation has, the transportation growth management grants, may be a possibility. We have the buildable lands inventory, housing needs assessment, and economic needs assessment that indicate, don't, they'll say they don't indicate a need for expansion of the urban growth boundary. We may be better to approach it from taking some forest land out of the urban growth boundary that may be not very suitable for development, swapping that for other forest land that may be a better fit with our urban growth boundary. Particularly, there's some land that our plan shows the Foothills Boulevard going through, and it might be good to have that land in the city. And it's, it's timber conservation land right now. So, we need to look at that. It's, it's not the easiest thing in the world to take land out of timber conservation, but putting other land back into it may be the way to go and make it much easier. So, this is something we're considering. And to have, we've broached it with our DLCD representative, and we just need to sit down and discuss it and see what the best approach might be.
So, I guess that's an affirmative that you are aware of it and working-
Oh, yeah.
Hard on it so far.
Among our other priorities, yes. The main thing I'm working really hard on is the village's plan. And the next thing I'm working on really hard is the comp plan.
Did, was, was Deb Nicholson able to get a debrief on the grant application that we put in last year that we didn't?
I know she asked, that was for the build grant. I know she asked for it, and I don't recall exactly whether she got it or not, but I believe-
She didn't get a response, but I contacted Tim Leary, and, and as soon as the government gets going again, and which they did on Friday last week, I think, he was going to ask their Washington office of Senator Wyden's person who knows the people at transportation to find out who is responsible and get some kind of feedback to Lindsey.
I know the, the plan is to apply again. So, for the, the build grant, but there may be other grants that could be pursued as well, but that's-
We should, we should try, because I don't think there's any land other than 23rd and the Rock Quarry and down by Charter that is more appropriate, that we could develop a good, higher-paying jobs.
Is, is there some kind of a requirement to annex that land first inside to the city to get transportation funds or urban growth boundary will do it?
In order for it to be fully developable, the owners would want to be annexed into the city. Like those areas where, south of 23rd Street, where the, there are property owners who are fairly anxious to come into the city so the property can be developed. They haven't applied for annexation.
I guess my question is, the road funding money that we're trying to get hold of, will that be more beneficial to have it if it's inside the city, inside the growth boundary, or not relevant?
I, I don't know about, what the criteria for the grants are. I would imagine that it would be good to be in the city. But I, again, I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle us back to the topic at hand, which was the comp plan review. It sounds like we're, we're going to sequence this after a planner comes onboard. And then, we can get it on our schedule consistent with our time availability. I would challenge the commissioners to spend a little bit of time reviewing the existing comp plan. And these, all of these ordinances are laid out so nicely now on this page that you can check them off as you reread them, so that we can enter into, into our work sessions with a little bit of background. All right? Okay. Next up under new business is planning commission rules and procedures. Who's is that?
Yeah, so, the planning commission rules and procedures were attached into your packet. They were last amended in 2015. They state that the planning commission shall hold an annual workshop to discuss goals and review the procedures. And the annual goals and projects were discussed at our February 5th meeting. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to review the rules and procedures. And if legal counsel wants to speak up to an issue he identified, I will turn that over to him.
Okay. So, two things. First, the, since Measure 56 in 1999, we have to do land use regulations by ordinance. So, although these rules are authorized by ordinance, they can't really substantively differ too much. So, there's at least one thing that I noticed that's in these procedures that's not in the code, and that's the 48-hour notice of, I think you have a conflict and shouldn't be able to participate. It's a bias challenge. So, these rules say it, but your code doesn't. It would be best if we got that into the code, because that's the way we're supposed to do land use by ordinance, not, you know, because honestly, if you're an applicant and you, you are preparing your case, or you're an opponent and you're preparing your case, you're going to want to look at the code and see what the procedures are. And if you go to the administrative procedures section of our code, it doesn't say you got to submit it 48 hours in advance. So, it's, you know, something we should address. There's some other things that since this was last reviewed in 2015, the city adopted the appointive bodies ordinance, which is where we went through all the appointive bodies, the parks board, the library board, all those bodies. And we established some uniform procedures for all of them. And that's in Chapter 206 of the code. So, we reduced the chapters for everybody, the individual chapters, and said, okay, follow the procedures in 206 unless you have other specified procedures. And planning commission has some other specified procedures. For example, you can't be removed without having a hearing. That's something unique to the planning commission. So, so we need to update it, at least to reference Chapter 206, point out where it's different. And there's some other things in the rules where it references conflict of interest statutes. Well, they were amended in 2015 to delete Chapter 244, 135, which was a conflict section specific for planning commissioners. So, they got rid of that, and now the conflict provision you're subject to is the same one every other public officer is subject to. So, in, in Chapter 244, that's actual and potential conflicts of interest. So, I appreciate Kate putting this in front of you, but I think what it means is we have a little work to do to update them, since there were some legislative changes, and we made some changes ourselves. So, I, I guess I would appreciate it just if you direct us to bring back some revisions and we'll work on them.
Would you like us to suggest some changes this evening?
Sure, if you have suggestions.
I have a question on, under Section 4 of Article 2, membership. You just, and something you just said sort of spurred my memory, my reaction here. You were saying a commissioner cannot be removed without a hearing before the council. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe the statute reflects something about notice. I don't have it in front of me, but-
Well, it says, "The commission may recommend to the council by majority vote the removal of a member for misconduct or non-performance." And then, the next sentence reads, "Notwithstanding this rule, removal of a member shall be automatic following a second unexcused absence during any calendar year." To me, that doesn't seem, that would need to go before the council. Am I correct?
Yeah, automatic would mean no hearing, yeah. So, I think there's, there's an issue there.
All right. So, and then I saw something else?
Sure.
In the listing of who, you know, the conflict of interest and relatives who you have to consider, do we, should we add significant other to that list?
Again, the, the, the Chapter 244 has been updated since they went in and revamped part of it. They got rid of the 244, 135. So, we want to stick with the state definitions, and I'm certain they have been amended since this, since we know that the specific provision has been, I think it has to do with people in your household. So, it doesn't, it's not as limited as to significant other. It could be just somebody in your household, like your mother or whatever. So, it could be other people.
Thank you.
Okay. So, you, you need direction from us to-
I think you should basically pass a motion and say, could you bring this- I think you should basically pass a motion and say, could you bring this back and make some suggested revisions to update it per the changes in the statute? And thank you, Kate, for bringing it to our attention, that we have to look at these every year, and probably should have caught this last year.
So moved.
I second that.
Is there anything else that the commission would like to discuss or consider in these procedures? That are not there?
It might be good to see what the revised ones look like, so that we can work with them instead. So I, I would go ahead and move that, whatever Richard said was the thing will do.
I think Steve, Steve moved it. You seconded it, I believe.
Okay.
All right.
I'll, I'll bring it back at a future meeting when you don't have any hearings that we can talk about.
All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Did you get that, that motion, Kate?
Did you?
Has Richard dictated it? Okay. All right. Any Planning Commission training?
None tonight.
Richard, you were going to say something?
I was going to say, none tonight.
All right. Any reports or comments? Seeing none. Okay, future agenda items in our next meeting, which is Tuesday, March 5th.
Well, it will be Richard's last meeting.
Oh, wow.
So please, please consider some kind thoughtful words to share with him. The, we will have a hearing on the park zone uses that Mr. Appicello is preparing. There will be a final order for Ocean Lake Vet Clinic presented to you. And again, Richard's last meeting.
So we can have a roast? No?
Sure.
He still has to come back to work for a few days, so...
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Well, we'll put together some kind thoughts. How's that?
Don't struggle too hard.
It's not a struggle at all. Any other comments, concerns? No? Hearing none. Adjourned.